...meeting for Thursday, February 7th, 2019. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Planning Board members present, we have our regular members, Sean Winston, we have Niles Shore, we have the Vice Chair, Paul Bover, we have regular member Nicole Fecto, and we have alternate Mike LaRue. We also have our Town Planner, Lee Jay here. We also have our Town Planning Technician and Webmaster, Facebook Administrator.
Envision Berwick Chair.
Envision Berwick Chair.
And soon to be Interstate Traveler.
And soon to be Interstate Traveler? That's a new one, okay. James is here.
And student.
And student. And absent tonight is our Code Enforcement Officer, Dan, and we have other members of the public here. Moving on to Public Comments Session, it's open to any resident property owner in the town of Berwick to talk about anything relating to the Planning Board. Please feel free to come forward. To the podium for Public Comments Session is now open. We will have another Public Comments Session at the end of the meeting tonight, so if you have further questions or comments, you can make them then. Seeing nobody come forward, close the Public Comments Session, moving on to the approval of minutes for January 17, 2019.
I have no comment on them.
No comments on them?
It was a little loud when I was reading them. I managed to fight my way through.
Two meetings in a row, James. He's not even listening. Two meetings in a row. He's got nothing for you.
Oh, that's perfect.
Does anybody have any additions, corrections? All right, so the motion will be for approval of the minutes.
I'll make the motion when we approve the minutes as written.
Second?
Further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your hands. Abstaining?
I'm going to abstain, since I wasn't here.
Okay, so that's four to, four yes, none, nobody voting no, and one abstaining.
Although I watched at home, like I'm sure so many of you are right now.
Moving on to Old Business, Minor Subdivision, 365 Hubbard Road, map R11, Lot 4, Aqua Fire Protection Zone, applicant England. And we'll start off with Lee Jay.
Well, there's not much to start off with, Mr. Chairman. I did not provide a memo to you on this project, but I did provide draft findings of fact for you. They are seeking approval for a minor subdivision. Quite honestly, I'm not even convinced it is a subdivision, but I think granting the approval for them can't hurt at this point, since they had the plan prepared. There's really nothing here. It's just a subdivision of the parcel that includes a right-of-way to the rear, 50-foot right-of-way to the rear portion of the property, in order to be able to access that property for whatever may occur in the future. Other than that, there's really no impacts, there's nothing here, pretty straightforward.
Sounds good to me.
Sir, please state your name and address for the record.
John England, 365 Hubbard Road. So yeah, so what we're looking at is basically, this 43 acres there, we're looking to separate a larger 40-acre lot, sell it off, and retain three for ourselves. And that's, you know, it's, before we purchased the lot, Wentworth was broken off and sold to him, so it's within the five years. So because the Home Set Act is over five years, I was under, so that's why we had to come forward with a minor subdivision. And that's what you see in front of you. Pretty, yeah, like, like you said, just, I don't know if it's, you know, a house lot, you know, some of it's pretty wet out there, but they could still build out there, but it's whatever anybody wants to do with it, for the most part.
Questions?
I think, just to be clear, that I think we decided at the last meeting that we would not ask for an HHE 200 to prove that it could support septic, but at some time in the future, someone wants to build there, they would have to do that.
Yep, and there's plenty to support that. Yep.
Sean?
What was it, I couldn't remember what the reason was for changing that back lot line.
Here?
Yeah.
That was because of the right-of-way.
Okay.
Basically, just, it abuts my property, you know, on the side right here, rather than, I think before Dustin had it, so the property came down the middle here, and the 50-foot right-of-way went up that with some, with some land on each side, so he thought it'd be better if the right-of-way came, abutted my property and extended out 300 feet. So that's what they, the agreement they came up with.
Mike? All right, so we didn't approve, we did not approve the application complete last time, so that would be the first step, and then we have to approve the, if we do approve that one, then we have to approve the findings of fact, and then the application complete.
Correct.
Are you looking for a motion, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve the minor subdivision for John and Rebecca England.
First, we have to approve the application complete.
Approved the application, okay. Then I move that we approve the application complete for 366 Hubbard Road, minor subdivision.
Second?
Seconded, further discussion? All in favor? Okay. And then, any questions on the findings of fact? A lot of these are non-applicable.
Correct. Most of them are non-applicable.
Yeah.
Because they're not really a subdivision, yeah.
Pretty much all of them are non-applicable.
Exactly.
Do you have another, new copy of the plans for the office?
I have, I do.
Oh, okay.
I have, I have the Mylar copies and the regular paper ones.
Okay.
What do you guys need?
Perfect.
So, do you need those now?
No, no. All right, so the next motion would be for the approval of the findings of fact for 366 Hubbard Road.
I move that we approve the findings of fact for 366 Hubbard Road, minor subdivision.
366, or is it 365?
Five.
Okay, well, it says 366 on this paperwork, James.
All right, so on the findings of fact, just, let's just make sure that we just correct that. It's 365 Hubbard Road, map 11, Lot 4, yep.
Is that true, is that correct?
Would you like to amend your motion?
I would like to amend my motion to approve the findings of fact for 365 Hubbard Road, which is a minor subdivision.
Second?
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's four, nothing. And then the final approval would be for the, a motion would be for approval of the application for 365 Hubbard Road.
I move that we approve the application for 365 Hubbard Road, a minor subdivision.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's it.
Yep, all done?
All done.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Wow!
Sleep with James.
Yeah, well, absolutely.
You don't have to stick around. You know the deal.
Sure.
You miss us? You just miss us?
Thank you, everybody.
You want to take that, you want to take that with you, John?
What's that? Oh, yeah.
Hanging up on your wall at home?
I have like three copies of this. This is all in the trash. Thank you very much.
Bye, thanks, Sean.
Good to see you.
Moving, continuing in on Old Business, Conditional Use Application Extension Request, 357 Portland Street, that's the RCI District, Paper Birch LLC.
Hi, guys.
Hello, I'll just start, hello, sir, I'll just start off with the Town Planner.
Yes, good evening again. So this is another one. I have not prepared a memo for you, but I believe you have a letter from the applicant in front of you, simply requesting an extension of their previous approvals, so that they, there are certain permits and other things that the applicant can explain that they're still working on, and need to be able to have some additional time in order to complete that, before they can move forward with the project at this time.
All right, sir.
Hi, I'm Paul Vanoudy. I'm the owner of 357 Portland, and last year, we worked together to do the CU permit for the production facility for the medical marijuana, and it just, it's sort of said, beset by delays, mainly the RFP bidding process. I waited about a month until after I got the findings of fact, and then I maybe was a little bit too thorough, and I got, you know, I looked for three proposals from each contractor, then by the time I got all them in, some took a couple months to get to me, I had trouble tying people up, and everything really just got delayed. Working with CMP for a transformer, it has to be custom-built, so there's a sort of, some amount of time that it's going to take for that to transpire as well, so.
James, do you have the date that we approved that application?
It's the 15th of March.
Is that long ago?
Gosh, it doesn't seem like that long ago.
Seems like you were just in here.
I know.
And he'll be back again.
What are you looking to, what are you looking for an extension? To what date?
How long?
I, was it a year?
He's asking for how much longer, you want an extension?
Yeah.
I just assumed it was a year, an annual extension.
Do we have the exact date?
I'm looking.
Would that be the date on the top of the findings of fact?
That would be the date that it was signed, that was approved.
Okay.
I'm sure I could find it.
I don't see any information.
There was still snowing around, I remember that.
Yeah.
Because you guys did a site visit.
Yeah.
You're asking for a one-year extension?
That's correct.
Yeah, I don't have anything on the...
So we just make it based on the...
15 March of 2020?
You don't want to do the 15th of March. Go there. Go there.
14 March?
There you go. 14, I can go.
We can just put a date, we don't have to say it's one year from the time it was approved.
Can you live with the 14th of March?
I can live with the 14th of March, 2020.
All right, so, any discussion on, anything, any questions from the board?
No, I don't have any questions on that.
Is that, well, I got, I got a couple of questions. One question, has there been any changes to the application we approved?
No, absolutely not.
Not at all?
All the conditions are still the same, everything, all the site...
Would it make sense to not go, right now, you're going to be actually extending, I believe, less, oh, about, if this would be 2020 then? So you'd have a full, warm season to work?
Correct.
All right.
Correct.
So if we'd like to move forward, the, we could look at a motion for extending the Conditional Use Application for 357 Portland Street to 14 March, 2020.
So moved?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, all right, that's four, zero. All right.
Thank you, guys.
14 March, you said, Dave?
14 March, 2020. Niles doesn't want to do 15 March, so.
The 15th of March.
Me and Julia Caesar are real nervous about that day.
Why?
Oh, my God.
Have you done something you're ashamed of?
Go read Shakespeare.
Moving on to New Business, Subdivision Amendment for Callahan Lane, map R29-4, this is in the R3 zone. I'll start off with the Town Planner.
Yes, I believe you might have a short memo from Eric Sanderson of my office.
Yes.
On that. I was very busy, I apologize, so I had him do a quick write-up. Again, this is another one of those that technically, it wouldn't even be in front of this board, but for the fact that it was part of a subdivision previously, but it's a land swap, sale of land to and a butter, in both directions, and so if it were not part of a subdivision previously, it would not even have to come to this board, but because it was a subdivision previously, it needs to come back for an amendment to approve that land swap.
So this would be a lot-line revision, otherwise?
Pretty much, yes. Another way to put it, lot-line revision.
I feel like we've had a lot of these lately.
All right, sir.
Rick Ingles. I am the owner of the big parcel of land.
Address?
39 Carolyn Drive.
Okay.
I, we purchased this property, I think, in 91, and had it surveyed shortly after that. It was just a minor subdivision, survey, just to get an idea where our lot lines were, and when we did that, we found out that we actually owned the outbuildings from one of the people's, the people's land that abutted our property. It was all family-owned, I'm sure, at that time, it was the Callahan, this is, was the Callahan, Mr. Callahan's daughter, who was Ruthier, but essentially, she was still in the family, so they didn't have any reason to worry about where they put their properties. And so, it was actually Fran LaPierre from Civil Consultants that did the survey for me. And so we went to the Ruthiers and said, you know, "At some point in time, we probably ought to get the lines moved, so that you actually own the buildings that you think you own, because I really have no interest in owning them, and it's a 32-acre piece of property, it's not anything close to where I'm doing any of the, you know, any of my business on my land." And she is sent, Mr. Ruthier since passed away, Ms. Ruthier now has moved to Dover, and the son now owns the property, maybe I'm getting into more detail than you need, just let me know if you need, don't need any... And so, he wants to get it refinanced, and I said, "Now's the time to get these lines figured out, so that you own what you want to own." I don't think he's in the process, I don't think he wants to purchase the land, so that's why I offered, "Well, why don't we just take that lot, I don't know if you have the copy of it, it's a long, skinny, cigar-shaped lot." And he didn't even know he owned the back end of the lot, because it's so narrow and skinny. So I said, "Well, why don't we kind of give you your back line, and I'll just take a portion of the back end of that, and we'll just swap acre for acre, and be done with it, so that now you own what you think you own, when you go to the finance agent, you've got a deed that looks like it's what you want to own." So that's really why I'm here, is just to, I guess, I've gone through Civil Consultants, what you have there in front of you is what they proposed as a land swap, and I thought probably the best thing to do is come to the board and make sure the board didn't have a problem with it before I proceeded, and having Civil Consultants stake it out and go through having the deeds changed. So really, I, I think I'm probably here on a, because we don't have an official change of the lot subdivision yet, because I wanted to get your, if you had any concerns before I went ahead and had Civil Consultants change the lot lines, and then we present the town with a new change to the subdivision plan, if you had no problems with it.
It makes sense, what I see here.
Yeah, so this is new business, and you don't necessarily have to take action tonight. In fact, it would be good if you could give, give Mr. Ingles some idea that you're feeling comfortable with it, so then I think Civil Consultants can proceed with the plan, so that you'll have Mylars to sign, so that it can get recorded.
Right.
You can choose to or not to have a public hearing on this, where it's a minor change or amendment to the subdivision plan, but tonight was more informational at this point, and I'd suggest giving Mr. Ingles some direction, so that if Civil needs to prepare the plans for the next meeting, we can do that.
Right. I'd like, the board like to proceed.
I think it looks like it makes sense, I don't think there's a need for a public hearing on this.
And you do have a draft set of findings of fact as well in front of you, so you do need to change the date.
Do you have the, do you have the maps?
No, I don't.
Okay, here.
But if it's a simple lot-line revision, and there's no variance needed, or there's no, everything is...
There is no findings of facts in here.
Not that I know of. Yeah.
No, the settlement agreement is here.
James didn't print them for you.
James is fault.
I have, I do have a draft, but the dates need to be changed anyway, so.
You have that?
Yes.
It's probably much like England's findings of fact, anyway.
It's going to be.
I say go ahead and have them create the Mylar and the plans, and bring them in here, and then we can put this on the agenda for two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can, we can vote on the application complete, then.
Yes, you could do a complete application, and again, not necessarily have to hold a public hearing or anything, and just vote on it.
No, I don't really want to throw a wrinkle into this, though, but I'm actually changing the lot lines for somebody else's property. Do they need to have, I mean, I've been in contact with them, and they're all on board with this, but you see where I'm kind of going with this? I don't know if that, if that person needs to be here as well, you know what I'm saying?
It would be good to have that person here.
That's what I would have thought.
Please.
Yep, either that, or if he can't be here, a letter indicating that he's authorized...
Just something that he agrees to this, so that we're not changing, actually taking some of his land without his consent.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
So I happen to know there's a variance application in the same area, in fact, I think it abuts Callahan Lane, but there's no connection between this and that variance application?
Okay, all right, I'm not aware of it, so.
No.
There's not, but I can probably speak to that, if you'd like, because it is still a variance on the right-of-way that I do own.
Yeah, which is Callahan Lane.
Right, correct.
Yeah, but no relation to the variance application.
No, it will have no, that change in the land won't affect that variance in any way.
All right, well, we'll see you back here in two weeks. Would that give you enough time?
Well, I can check with Civil Consultants, and if it's not, I'll just let James know that they don't feel like they can get that here.
Please let James know at least a week ahead of time.
Actually, James will be on vacation, I'm going to give you my card, so you can contact me.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, he'll give you his cellphone.
Just FaceTime James.
Yeah, James could Skype, FaceTime.
It's fine, it's fine.
Did you get vacation, James?
So, while I'm here, and I don't want to, you know, take up a lot of your time, because I'm sure you're busy, but the variance that you made reference to, if you look on the plan, this was a illegal subdivision.
We're talking about a different, we're talking about a different property?
Just the right-of-way, I just would like some clarification on the right-of-way, if I could get that.
You probably shouldn't talk about that.
Okay, can I go to public comment after? Stay for public comment?
Well, this board doesn't deal with variances at all.
It's going to go over the appeals board.
No, it's not a variance, I just would like to know what my rights are on the right-of-way, and you're the ones that, this Planning Board is the one that set up the right-of-way.
Well, why don't you give me a call?
I can do that.
Yeah.
That's...
And we'll definitely...
I don't want to put you on the spot, it's just that, you know, I've been trying to figure out what my rights are of that right-of-way, because I own the land and...
Oh, it's a good point. Yeah, it's a real good point. It just gets sticky when we're...
I understand.
Yeah, legally, we can't talk about it without people here, so.
Okay, well, it's my land that I'm talking about.
I know, I, okay, okay.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, so two weeks from now is the 21st, right?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a couple other things.
Yes.
Couple hearings.
You're probably looking at March's...
Well, if they show up.
But I'll call, I mean, it's not that critical.
Well, those don't show up.
Just getting started, knowing that I was...
Continuing on New Business, we have a Conditional Use Application for 6 Sullivan Street, map U4, Lot 4, SCI Zone, Function Hall, Professional Office, Recreation Facility, Retail Business, Service Business, West Wellness. We'll start off with the Town Planner.
Yes, the applicant is proposing to open a healing art studio with retail uses on upper floors and the CI Commercial Zone, Industrial Zone. The lot consists, the lot consists, covers over less than a tenth of an acre on Sullivan Street, as you know, right across the street, it's part of the brick building complex over there. The applicant has provided to you, in your package, I believe, a list of the uses by floor that they're proposing to undertake over there, and I believe you should have at least a memo of initial review from the Fire Department as part of your packet as well.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
He got it right this time. And this is, again, an initial application, and the applicant is here this evening to discuss the project with you.
I'm Kat West, I'm the owner of West Wellness, and we just purchased 6 Sullivan Street, and we are looking to open a yoga, tattoo studio, and massage parlor there. It's all going to be healing and wellness-based, and we're looking to hope to enrich and engage the community in these things, and we also hope to be a part of the community and events that you guys are holding, and we would also like to hold some in the building there. Yeah, I guess we'll start there. Has everyone read over what we put for uses and things there? Awesome.
Have you closed on the property yet?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
The second floor, we're still...
If you could just state your name for the record.
Ben Russell. Thank you. The second floor, we're still looking at options for restaurants or catering-type people, we're still looking into all that, but eventually, we're planning on opening some sort of cafe or something along those lines.
Can you tell us, there's three floors in a building, and I know, I'm familiar a little bit with the building, so the three floors, first floor would be used for the...
The first floor will be the tattoo art studio, with, there's additional rooms that we can rent out to massage therapists to practice what they do, and then hopefully, we're going to have the massage therapists integrate with the tattoo studio to create more of, a different feel for a tattoo studio, you know, not like you see around normal towns, it's going to be more healing and more the spiritual aspect of, you know, engraving art on someone. The second floor, like, so we're still working on, and then the third floor, we're planning on opening a yoga studio, and also holding community events, like family movie nights, and hopefully some dinners, charity-type dinners.
Concerts?
Yeah.
It's a beautiful space up there, it really is.
Yeah, the ballroom is beautiful. It needs, the building needs life in it, basically.
So the historical nature of the building, especially the third floor, which is where all the history really is, that's going to remain pretty much the way?
We're not, we're not changing the aesthetics at all, no, we love it the way it is, yeah. We're very into the history of it, the IOF and all of that stuff, the Oddfellows and their message.
Niles?
We have the owners of the tattoo studio, if you'd like to ask them any questions or hear any more about that.
Sean, do you have anything?
Not really, I think, my only thing would be like, would you consider the, like, the coffee shop on the ground floor, on the first floor, instead of the second floor?
No, because the second floor is already fully furnished, it's a fully furnished kitchen already, it has all...
So if the kitchen was on the first floor, that would be an ideal place? Because I was thinking the same thing, okay.
Essentially, the building was just set up that way, we're working with what we got.
Yeah, I think when that building was, when Dennis did that building, he, there was already some people on the first floor.
Because he had the salon.
Started on the second and the third floor, put the elevator in, and the whole bit, yeah. So it's a...
It's all handicap accessible, so we're hoping to offer yoga to handicap.
And the elevator would be usable?
Yep, we're working on elevator inspection.
It's a requirement, the Fire Chief said that it's a requirement, that it would be up and going, or has to be inspected.
State Fire Marshal's Office will need to inspect.
We're meeting with the inspector this week, so.
So, I didn't hear what you said, you're meeting with?
We're meeting with the elevator inspector this week.
Okay, yeah, if it helps at all, getting the building going, the One Sullivan Building has gone through pretty much everything that you're about to?
Yep.
Although I think you're further ahead with the condition of the building.
Yep.
And I'm sure that somebody could, especially the Fire Marshal's Office, which can be intimidating, but it doesn't have to be.
Yeah.
And I've already reached out to all of them and introduced them to Alex, so that they could all kind of connect on that.
Thank you so much.
This is a very incestuous type of community here.
Well, we're, listen, we're, everybody knows everybody around here.
But it is something that we want, we want, we want to start squeezing the big, prime parcel a little bit from the sides, and try to push here, so that...
We love all your...
Bulge somewhere else.
For the town.
Have you seen the plans for the town?
Yeah, we've looked through them all.
All right. Sean, do you have anything else?
No, that was my only question.
Okay, Nicole?
My only question was really about the elevator and the fire system. I mean, I see that it's noted here. I was just wondering how far along you are and, you know...
So the security system people came a few days ago. We're working on the way Comcast set up our cable, our phone lines, they... The security system couldn't hook into it because it's a modem and that's not a reliable source to send security alarms. So we're working on installing a radio to send the signal, yeah.
And then the sprinkler system inspections and all that stuff?
Yeah, they came by too and were underway in that.
Awesome, yeah.
So pretty much, I think, from our perspective or my perspective for you to come back for final approval is I'd like to have copies of all the letters from everybody certifying that they've inspected it and that it meets code and those sorts of things. While we're not a code-driven process here, I think it's just going to be important before the board votes on it or approves it that we know that, you know, all of the health, life, safety codes can be met, so... As soon as you can get those and I can give you my card and you can email or fax or whatever you need to do to get that stuff to me if it's in the next couple of days.
I'd like to see floor plans, too.
Yeah, I think like with the One Sullivan project, which was a testbed for multi-use development. We had five uses that we had, you know, we talked about each use, where it would be, how many people, hours of operation. You know, just a narrative to kind of describe what it is.
Some of that is in here already, actually.
But floor plans would be good for the... At least the first and the third floor. Obviously, you don't know what's going to happen with the second floor
and I don't know if that would have to come back. I mean, we're not going to approve the second floor based on what's there already, are we?
I mean, I don't know why you wouldn't.
I wouldn't have to come back.
The kitchen's there and the seating for maybe thirty people.
Multi-use.
Yeah, so then floor plans for all three floors, then, don't you think?
So just as an aside, although because it's an existing building, we're in really good shape. Remember, this is in the overlay zone with the new form-based code, which you folks developed
Oh, yeah.
a year, a year and a half ago, so...
They're in her swing with that, isn't it?
There you go.
You're going to need to see things like signage and lighting and all that stuff, too.
Exactly, yes. We will want to see signage and what you're planning.
Are you familiar with the sign, the sign ordinance and the form-based code?
Totally, no.
Okay.
James will explain it all to you.
Just Skype James while he's on vacation.
He's on the beach somewhere.
There's very specific... There's very specific requirements for signs. Where they go and how they're lighted, if they are, and so on and so forth. Mike, did you have anything?
Are we going to hold a public hearing?
I think...
We have to.
I would think so.
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
Yes.
I mean, we had like four public hearings for One Sullivan, so...
No, I mean, I think with the redevelopment of this and it being in the overlay, it makes sense.
History of the building, the location of the building, I think it just makes sense.
I'd suggest probably March 7th because you guys got a little time to get all the stuff together. Does that work for you guys?
Yeah.
Would you rather do the two weeks from now?
I think we could do the two weeks. We're like halfway through all of the...
Inspection and stuff.
We're going to do a site lock, too, then?
Do you need...
I mean, I don't need to, but I don't know who might.
Can I bring up one more point that I'm not sure if Lee J. is familiar with it or James? But when the House of Hope was moving into that location, I had an issue with the location of the LP tanks on Backstreet where they probably are on a public way. So I'd just like to bring that up, maybe the town, if, as long as everything is deemed safe. And I think our fire chief said it probably was okay. They put a barrier. I want to make sure that that's clean and we don't get into a pickle down the road with an accident with a plow truck. So pay attention to the LP tanks in the back.
Does the board want to go out to March 7th? We already have a public hearing on the land use ordinance coming up.
As long as it's not during the Ides of March.
Well, we are going to have... Well, I mean, next meeting, we're going to have that, the Callahan Lane subdivision.
And we're going to have the concrete people back.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Supposedly.
How's the... Do you want to go out to the 7th of March?
I mean, it doesn't bother me. Does it bother them?
Yeah.
It's up to you.
Be honest.
Yeah. I mean, it's only two weeks. We were hoping to open sort of towards the end of the month, but...
All right, let's schedule... Let's do the... On the 21st.
For the public?
Let's do a public hearing on the 12th. Well, first, well, hold on. First, we have to approve the application complete. So let's like get ahead of ourselves here.
Yeah, I mean, there's no real plan because you're not looking at a footprint with anything. It's a building in the middle of, you know, buried by other buildings, so...
Correct. So first, we have to look at the application being complete.
Correct.
So we have a motion to...
Is it complete?
I'm sorry?
I said, is it complete?
Yeah, I mean, like the Fire Mar... What do we need from the Fire Marshal's Office?
I mean, I think that's a good question and you may... I mean...
I don't see a list of the butters.
On the one hand, I'd say if they still have work to do in the building or things that you can do in the building, although you're doing it at your own risk, I would rather have you push it out till the March meeting simply because I think in order to... Under the... This is actually the first project that we're going to look at under the form-based code piece. You need to have your signage. I mean, we need to have some of this other information that you're going to need to submit. And I mean, the sign doesn't have to be exact as how you're going to do it or a signage, but what it's going to resemble and whatnot. So if you can put some of that information together and you're going to get your letters from the other code folks from the state and whatnot, it might make sense to bundle all that and let's push it out.
If you look on the backside of the application, it pretty much says exactly what you need to do. It's one through eight and it starts with, like Nicole said, the list of the butters.
Yeah, I don't see that the application is complete, although I'd like to...
It talks about the lighting. There's going to be no landscape, most likely. You know, identify the parking areas you already did. But garbage disposal, noise, are you guys going to be making noise in there, you know, things like that?
Low impact.
It's... Right, you have... Obviously, you have your application. It's right on the back of that. So this is a lot of good information, but I would just basically take this and just answer the question on there with exactly what you're going to do. You could come back to the 21st meeting with that information and then we can find the application complete.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
And if you can get that stuff within...
Absolutely.
Within two weeks and then we can hold a public hearing then on the 7th.
Okay.
So what I would do is touch base with James tomorrow so that the village, the overlay district, you can email them that chunk so that they'll have it to look at. And it'll give you a better idea on the signage issues and lighting issues and that sort of thing.
Friday, I'll be in Monday, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Awesome.
So the timeline would be they would go to work and on the first meeting in March, we would shoot for a complete application scheduled.
No, we can do it next two weeks.
Trying to shoot for that in two weeks.
And then hold a public hearing on March 7th.
On the 7th, correct.
Yes.
I understand.
Yep.
And then your... How about the site visit if we're going to go through the building?
We could do that on the 7th as well.
On the 7th as well, prior to the meeting.
Yeah. And we don't need daylight for that.
It'll be almost spring.
Well, we'll be inside. They have electricity. Does that sound good? Do you have any questions?
I don't think so.
Anything else from the board?
You guys going to take the restaurant sign down?
Einstein, yeah, yeah, we're going to take it down.
Give it back to Dennis.
But everybody calls it the Einstein's Building. Then what are we going to call it? Or the Eiffel 52 sign is still up, too, I think.
Give it back to Dennis.
Yeah, give it to Dennis. He'll love it.
All right, thank you. We'll see you back in two weeks.
Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda is the land use ordinance amendments. We're going to be holding a public hearing on February 21st, so James, I know you went and made some changes from last time that we asked you to do and there just also seems to be this new thing in here. What's that? Littering and animal waste ordinance.
Yeah. So I'll start from the top. So number one is conditional use in the Shoreland Commercial Industrial because it's compatible based off of the definition. We cool with that?
That's what we talked about. Is that official? We cool with that?
Let the minutes reflect that we cool with that.
I move that we're cool with that. I have a second.
Thank you.
Number two...
But you wish you had night classes still, huh?
Next semester. So dimensional requirements for Shoreland Commercial Industrial, which is a little salmon-colored thing outside the Village Overlay District. It's basically two or three lots right now. The minimum lot size is 60,000 square feet, especially because it's tied into town infrastructure. It makes no sense. So reduce it significantly and we probably could even reduce it even further. But for now, I think that makes sense.
So James and I talked about that a little bit and, you know, the thing is, is if you look at the parcels that are affected, 60,000 square feet, those three or four parcels or five parcels that are in that area are all non-conforming. By moving it to a 10,000 square foot lot size, it'll make them conforming.
Really? I would think that many of them would still be non-conforming.
Well, it's certainly going to help. I mean, you know, dropping it by 50,000 square feet.
It doesn't make sense when you're trying to develop downtown to have everything non-conforming.
Exactly.
Yeah. How about the use table? Has anyone looked at that? Where's James?
What?
Did you look at changing anything in the use table? Like, one of the things that it came up over the last year is the underlying district, which is Shoreland. You have dimensional requirements, have to adhere to that. And there was a lot of talk about that. I think you may have been in on it. I don't think Lee J. was.
I was not. I was... I think that was prior to my...
Can you guys look at that, whether it makes sense as we go forward?
For the uses in Shoreland Commercial Industrial or for the dimensional requirements?
Not the uses. These were dimensional requirements.
That's what this is.
Yeah, and the uses that are in... Right. If you could not meet them, and I think it was, it had to do with residential. So it was a use, but you had to meet... So what I'm asking is, can you look at the underlying district requirements?
Well, the RCI would...
One line in the land use ordinance that says you must meet in SCI the underlying district requirements. And I know dimensional was in there and then I think uses were in there, too.
So not to get too technically bogged down, but are you suggesting that the shoreline zone uses? So if the ordinance says underlying uses, that's the CI zone. The shoreline zone is an overlay zone.
It's an overlay zone, correct. And it goes in 250 feet from the river.
Correct, correct. But the underlying zone is the uses that are allowed in the CI zone because that's the base zone.
Yeah.
Shoreland zone's an overlay zone. If we had to... I haven't looked at it. James and I just talked about it tonight. But if we had to, we could create a new general development zone. I'm working with another community on doing that right now and amending the ordinance. It's a shoreline zone and the DEP is in favor of doing that in urban areas. And it would make the set... Could make the setbacks 25 feet and allow other uses to occur as a general development zone. So that's something we could look at if we absolutely need to.
Yeah, thinking back, I think the issue was, let's say, for example, Gateway Gas goes away and somebody wants to put a hotel there. That's a change of use that I don't think would be... And I'm...
I'm just laughing at Dave's reaction, sorry.
It was that kind of a thing and I know we had a couple discussions in the town hall about it, whether... That kind of thing.
If I get a few minutes, I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, I'm going to look at it, too, and I'll...
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if Gateway Gas wanted to go there, they're... I mean, they're in the Village Overlay District where the dimensional requirements are exempt.
Yeah, but that's 250 feet and it actually gets very close to Sixth Sullivan. It includes Rabbit and Shaw.
Don't forget a use like that. You're talking about having buried tanks and that sort of thing, which would be somewhat different than a retail use or a hotel or a commercial use. But yes, we'll take a look.
For example, yeah. So I just want to look at it.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Right, number two and number three haven't changed. I think we were cool with that last time. I added a change to... There's a loose leaf over there that's folded up. I just added a couple small things. Two new definitions to meet things that are on our use table.
Oh, good.
Mineral...
Passing it down to you.
Good, thank you.
Mineral industry, which would be processing and storage of industrial minerals. And industrial minerals is an actual, a term that includes aggregates and...
Is it defined in our land... Do we have a... Do we have a industrial materials definition?
Industrial mineral, I mean, it'd be kind of... I think it'd be excessive, but I think that's something you can like...
I think Niles would probably like to see it.
Something you can... It's something you can look up and it's something that pops up. There's some of these definitions where you type in the term and it's very... It's not clear what it is. I think it's pretty clear on what industrial minerals are.
But you're referring to some other document that defines this? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That this is a term that is a standard industry use somewhere in some document?
I'll try to find it and reference it, yeah, I can.
Yeah, it would be...
Is it the standard industrial code, the SIC code?
I just found a couple of things online. I didn't find a static document to reference, but I'm sure I...
Make a reference to whatever it is so somebody can find it.
Yeah, because it's not in here in our land use ordinance.
Either that or I'll just define what industrial minerals are.
Mineral exploration and mineral extraction is, but we do not define minerals.
Some of us use old browsers that may not pop up the same thing that you find.
Right.
Still using Netscape.
With his hotmail.
Parking facilities...
I'm so old, I don't even know what Netscape was. I didn't get the joke, so don't worry about it.
Radio Shack TS 3000.
Now I understand what you're talking about.
Go to Circuit City, get a new browser.
Parking facility is a structure or land used for off-street parking of vehicles. Pretty straightforward. The next thing here, I got a kick out of this. We have a use table for motorized vehicular traffic on existing roads and trails. We're okay with that?
All the way across. Approved.
We're going to get rid of that.
So there's actually five...
Can't drive on the roads anymore.
There's five or six of these, like surveying, obviously surveyings allowed. There's like these activities that are just fed on our land use table. I get... I'll get them listed out, but the idea, we can just get rid of those.
They're really uses... They're not even uses that belong in a zoning ordinance. They're activities that would occur.
I think we never even pick up on that one before.
I just saw it today.
I mean, I, as I talked with James about it today, I mean, there's another town that I do a lot of work in and we amended their zoning ordinance and it had uses like the harvesting of wild blueberries. And it's like, why would you even, you know, control that in a zoning ordinance? You know, there was hunting and trapping was another use. So, I mean, yeah, older ordinances, sometimes that stuff just gets carried forward and until someone says, let's get rid of it, it just stays there.
And signs will actually... You can get rid of that because signs is in 7.12.
You have a permitting process for signs, though.
Number five is... So there's a lot of storage trailers that are actually... They're there illegally that Dan is going to be addressing. And this added sentence is... It would prevent them going from a storage trailer to a temporary cloth and...
Closet hut.
Closet hut. That's the term exactly that he used.
The old folks call it. Right, Niles?
Absolutely. That's with a Q, not a KW.
That's what... That's what that does. And then there's language that's just crossing out because I don't think it's really relevant anymore. It has to do with existing, but... That's that. Ooh, I forgot a page. And then there's... You guys have marijuana. I don't have a copy, so you read it to me, no.
We're striking medical and adding adult-use marijuana under drugstore?
Right, so for drugstores, the thought is that, I mean, if it keeps going down this path where a drugstore probably could have some marijuana-infused product as a pharmaceutical, doesn't make sense to inhibit that. It does make sense to not allow a drugstore to be able to sell adult-use marijuana.
Which is what we're calling recreational.
Right. The state calls it adult-use marijuana.
Okay, copy.
Recreational, we called it retail at one point. Adult-use, that's the term for now.
I'd add a dollar for every time we said marijuana.
That's why I'm not looking at you right now. We start to laugh because we always laugh when we talk about this.
You could buy a lot of marijuana.
I could, I could, legally.
Lee J., could you do something just because it's sort of sticking the back of my... With this new ban on CBD-infused things?
Yes.
Is that going to have any effect on our ordinance? Do we need to change anything because of that? Now, I understand it may not... It may be overruled, but assuming it is not, do we need to change anything in our ordinance?
We may only need to change something in the ordinance once we know what the finite decision is on that. In the meantime, it's just a ruling that the state said, and it's only for edibles, as I recall. It's not on, like, I've seen some stores that have...
I thought it was edibles and tinctures, but not on oils or something, I reckon.
Yeah, I mean, they've...
Or lotions or something.
Yeah, it's... So I would say let's...
I'm assuming some of our definitions talk about edibles or at least a production and... I just want to make sure we're okay.
Right. I think for now, we're okay. I'd say we need to monitor that and wait and see what the state does. It's like, you know, we're forging ahead with adult use and yet they pulled the contract from the current person group that was working on that and they're going to start over, so... So we're ahead of them on getting to the point of allowing adult use when we don't even know what the rules are gonna be yet, so.
I know we've discussed this 19 times already, but our moratorium, when does it end and do we need to do something if it ends before all these rules get established? Or did we build into it, the moratorium until the rules come out?
Well, on the, on the timing of the moratorium, I need to look at James because I'm, I'm not, I was not part of that process at that time.
It's June.
Well, I think we're, we're okay. I mean, we have it, we have it, we have it regulated to where we want it to go. We have it defined.
Well, but suppose, my question is, if our moratorium ends before the new rules come in?
Then, then if the new rules aren't in place, then you still cannot, you cannot, nobody can come in and operate unless the state licensing has, state licensing process is in place.
But also, we suggested.
Some of us remember medical marijuana facilities coming in during that gap period. I just want to make sure that.
We suggested to, to the selectmen to do the moratorium instead of an outright ban to give us time to write the ordinance.
Yes.
Right, and I just don't remember whether it was written that it extends until there are state rules or it was a date certain.
It would have to be date certain because you're only allowed up to 180 days for the moratorium.
I think it's already passed.
And, no, it's clearly the town passed, but the question is, if the moratorium ends before the new rules come in, are we gonna be in the same position we were in when we had a gap in the ordinance and medical marijuana facilities could come in without any rules? No patch to them, no. You're sure of that? 100%.
The licensing, the DHHS was the one licensing for medical caregivers and dispensaries and stuff like that with, it'd be a business license, so it'd be a state, it'd be a different category.
That moratorium's already expired.
I think we had the word "or" in there, Niles.
180 days.
Well, but James just said June.
Also, the thing that, for the adult, for the adult use, we have to opt-in first and we haven't opted in. The moment, the moment.
I'm comfortable that we're okay, we're not gonna be in the same bind we were in.
So the moment, if.
We're in a much better position.
Yeah, that's what I just wanted to make.
If the warrant passes, which the marijuana stuff will be a separate warrant, that will act as our opt-in, but also give us the zoning we want.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anything, I, I don't have it in front of me, is there anything else on there that's a change? I, I just remember the definitions were matched to the table. Adult use is only on RCI for both cultivating and the storefronts, only RCI.
This looks good.
Right.
I think that.
Yep.
I think that covers it.
And the public hearing on this is March 7th, did you say?
21st.
21st.
February 21st?
February 21st, yep. Oh, the animal waste.
Yeah, I just sneaked this one in here.
That one, I was brought to my attention that, so this is, we already have this adopted. That was adopted in November, but on the, on the back page, there's an addition under B. So we have this ordinance, but it doesn't specify the penalty for animal waste and that's what that does. Because it has penalties for littering, but that just clarifies what the penalty would be for animal waste. Apparently, so Public Works had to pick up some dog poop, I think, I don't know, yesterday or the day before, so.
Are you gonna put that in the minutes exactly as you just said it?
How exactly are you gonna collect that 25 bucks from the dog? I'm intrigued.
Picked up dog poop. We're gonna do DNA testing, we're gonna send it to the lab.
Because a fighter doesn't pay up.
We're sending it to 23andMe.
I think it'd be, I think it'd be law enforcement, police would find them.
They're gonna be thrilled with that.
So essentially, let's say that, let's say that somebody was walking down my street, walked their dog on my front lawn, dog did his business, I had it on video. I could call the police and be like, look, they never picked it up and then they could go find them 25 bucks.
I got news for you, the police aren't gonna do anything about that, but your neighborhood is horrible for the dog waste on the sidewalks.
Yeah.
If it were virtual, it could be $200.
My neighborhood is?
Yeah, I walk, I walk through there and there's, there's poop all over on Dobson Road.
No, there isn't, don't be walking through my neighborhood stirring stuff up.
I do.
She's walking her dog.
No, I just walk.
She's got two, I don't even have a sidewalk on my side of the street, so.
It's the other side of the street, anyway.
So this is just basically, the only thing that we're changing here is on 5B, we're putting in something there.
Yep.
A definition, okay.
And that's, that's it? What time is it? Good to go?
We got 35 minutes, James.
What's the timetable for, for these amendments? That's being voted on when?
In June.
June?
Yeah, we're trying to push it for town meeting.
They're due to the town manager on the 22nd. We're, for the first time since I've been employed here, we're on time and I haven't asked, had to ask Patty for an extension.
It's because we started in July.
I have to get Patty the town report too, so.
Oh, yeah.
I haven't done that yet, so.
We can work on that. Oh, and Patty wants you.
And me.
Yep, to.
I know this.
Do the oath.
Yeah.
We need to call her to make an appointment.
No, you can just walk in.
All right, does anybody, any informational items from the board to share? The public, nothing?
Do you have any information on?
Yeah, you can go look at the new February Berwick newsletter and you can find out there.
From the realtor to the stars, I'm curious, which stars exactly were we talking about?
There's one star.
Out of the 25 emails, there was three responses, so there's nothing that's happening.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything. We, he's aware that if anything is to be sold or developed, he needs to come back and re-subdivide the property and also master plan it, engineer it with the stormwater and the infrastructure and shared parking concepts. And I haven't heard anything, you know, so I'm an optimistic, I'm naive, so maybe sometime in the spring, things will happen, but.
Two weeks, two more weeks.
Has anybody reached out to other developers, anything to buy the property, any pieces of it from him? I mean, he doesn't seem to be all that interested from where I sit, I don't know.
Yeah, the only thing I could say and for people listening at home is, there's been a time and I think there wasn't even, while we were developing the form-based code, there wasn't even, even longer like dead silence where we were like, what, what's going on? And he, he actually came back to Berwick and that's when you see the, the concept plans and there was a lot of stuff that moved forward. So I hold out some hope that that's gonna happen again, but if we don't see anything by the spring and the summer, then we need to start looking at our, at our options if he's just sitting on it. But like I said, I hold on, I'm naive and optimistic and I hope to see something by maybe spring or early summer.
Have the two remaining parcels.
But yeah, but we've, we, we, there's all kinds of businesses that are interested. We have a spreadsheet of maybe 10 businesses that are ready or have expressed interest in going in. He's been connected to developers, he's been connected to builders, he's been connected to engineers. So the ball's in his court.
Have we passed off all four parcels back to funds at Jupiter?
Justice Central's 7.7 acre parcel and the.
And the little lawn, the parking lot and the.
The sort of building and the parking lot are still in town.
Yeah, the, so the green warehouse building, the blue, blue side building, which isn't, which isn't blue, that's going to be taken down and remediated. And I guess the word is, is that there's less, I guess, contamination than we thought was there.
Not, I heard there was only stuff on the edges and it wasn't really heavy-duty, so.
Yeah.
But until that's been, until that's been cleaned, it's still in town possession.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, one more public comment session. Public comment session is open to any resident property owner in the town of Berwick. Come forward, talk about anything that you heard tonight or that relates to the planning board. Please feel free to come forward. See, nobody come forward, close the public comment session. Next on the agenda is the adjournment.